Well, let's get started. And first, I just wanted to thank all of the Broomfield City Council for making time to meet with us. We really appreciate the opportunity to meet with our counterparts in our city councils. And we know that we work with multiple city councils, Boulder, Netherlands, Lafayette, Louisville, Broomfield, and Superior. So we're trying to make time to meet with our city councils more regularly because we have so many overlapping and common interests. So, thank you so much. And of course, it's just coincidental that it's during a pandemic, so there might be some questions about that as well. So first, I thought we could start with introduction. It's okay, I'd like to start introducing the members of the Board of Education and our superintendent, as well as a couple of members of staff who are here that support your network. So, my name is Tina, and I'm currently serving as the President of the Board, and this is my seventh year on the Board of Education. Why don't we go ahead? Richard, do you want to...
Yes, hi Tina. Hi, everyone. My name is Richard Garcia, and I am on the Board, and this is my fifth year on the Board.
My next, Tina?
Yep.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for taking time. I'm Kathy Gephardt. I am with Richard in my fifth year, and I'm the Vice President of the School Board.
Okay, Kitty would have been next, with Lisa.
Hi, Lisa Sweeney-Merah. I'm finishing up my first year on the School Board.
Okay, and Stacy?
Hi, I'm Stacy Ziz. I'm finishing up my first year on the School Board as well. I represent mostly North Boulder, and I just want to apologize ahead of time because I have to jump off at 6:30 to get to another meeting.
Okay, Rob, it's that?
Thank you, Tina. I think we're getting a little bit of feedback. Whoever's called in, if you could mute the 303 number, that would be helpful.
I think that's Kathy, if she could mute.
Well, I'll go ahead and get started. Mayor Quinn, council members, it's so nice to see you. Some of you seeing you again, for others meeting you the first time. Rob Anderson, I'm in my third year Superintendent here in the Boulder Valley School District. Lots of exciting things happening in our district, especially in our schools in Broomfield. And it's my pleasure to introduce Robin Fernandez. I'll let Robin introduce herself. She is the Supervisor of the schools that are in Broomfield. So, Robin?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Yes, Robin Fernandez. It's an honor to serve the communities of Erie, Lafayette, and of course, Broomfield. And a fun thing especially to be with you this evening because Mayor Quinn, you and I, when I was the Principal at Aspen Creek, we had many, many, many interactions, and then happy to be with you and this President, and to be talking all things Broomfield. Pleased to be here.
Okay. Broomfield, we love to meet you.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start out by saying I've had Quinn on the Mayor of Broomfield, and I remember Robin well. And I'll just, I have, my claim to fame is I have five daughters, all five of which have attended or are attending Broomfield High School. I have a sophomore at Broomfield High School who's going to go back for her very first time tomorrow, unless you guys do something different tonight. So, council members.
I'm Galene Catrietta. I'm the Mayor of Broomfield, and I'm actually in the Adams 12 side of Broomfield, so, but it's nice to meet you all. And I do think we have this really annoying feedback sound from somebody who's not muted.
I'm pretty sure Kathy Gephardt's line, if she can mute. If somebody can mute her, I don't know if you...
I'm muted. I don't know.
Oh, but who's the line, who's got the 303-10 line? I hate to act like a mayor.
But that's the one, yeah.
Who's talking on 303-10?
And if you design this, you probably... It has to do with our control room.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take that number offline, and then they'll call back in.
Will do.
Okay, so Galene, you want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Oh, I already did. I was done. Next.
So, council members?
My name is Devin Schaaf. I'm a council member here in Broomfield, Ward Three. My kids go to Cole Elementary here in BVSD, so thanks for meeting with us tonight.
Heidi Hinkle here. I'm also in Ward Five with Galene. I'm Adams 12 kid, but also grew up in Nywhale, so kind of stayed in the area as well.
I'm Lauren Anderson, in the council we're here to work for, and we're also in Adams 12. I have kids at Thunder Vista and Stargate.
My name is Jeanne Lim. I represent Ward Three for Broomfield City Council. I do live in Adams 12, but I have a strong affiliation with all educators because I am an affiliate faculty member at Regis University.
Broomfield City/County Manager's Office is also on the line, and rather than walking through all this, I'm Jennifer Hoffman, City/County Manager, and thanks for inviting our whole crew here tonight. We sure appreciate it. Okay, is that it? Great. So, we did send an agenda, and now I'm not sure if you, did you all receive an agenda from us?
We got it.
Okay, so we thought just because of the unique environment that we're in, we would start with a reopening update. So, Rob, do you want to just give a quick overview of where we are?
I sure do. And good news, Mayor Quinn, we won't be canceling schools tonight. So, your daughter gets to have her first day, along with my daughter, who will be having her first day of high school tomorrow at Monarch High. I do have a presentation, just really quick, that we can run through, so let me pull that up for everyone. Can you all give me a thumbs up if you can see that? Thank you so much. So, I would be not telling you the truth if I told you these past eight, nine months have been easy. They've been everything but easy, very, very complicated. As leaders in our community, I know that you understand and appreciate. We set four main goals as a school district in bringing our students back together. First goal, health, well-being, and safety of students and staff being the top priority, making sure that we're not forgetting about the academic and growth achievement of our kids, making sure that we have the right supports for teachers and staff, and then doing this in a way that was operationally and financially viable. Early in the summer, we developed a five-phase plan that we had a lot of confidence in that would have taken us all the way from remote learning all the way to the other side of this pandemic in Phase Five. This five-phase plan was based solely on health data. And what we realized as we started to enter into August, that there were going to be other factors besides just the health data that, and advice we were getting from both Boulder and Broomfield County Public Health. And so, we had to do some shifts and adjustments. Before I move on, though, Jason, and Helen, and everybody, the team at Broomfield County Health have been incredible. I need you all to know that. They've been great partners. We're just so thankful for their partnership guidance and wisdom. So, when we realized that we were not going to be able to start out in person, we started out remote and built a working advisory group with representatives from across our district, teachers, parents. And then, they came with some recommendations on how we were going to be able to come back into school. So, starting September 29th is when we started to bring kids back into person, starting with our youngest learners that were prioritized by this group, also doing some outdoor learning, our intensive special education programs, and we were able to open up our tech center and our mountain schools. The following week, we were able to open up preschool. And then, we started to begin to bring the rest of the grades back, staggering those start dates, making sure that we're being extra cautious and safe, and providing the supports for teachers that they needed. I can't stress to you all how stressful and what a trying time this has been for our educators. They've been heroes through all of this. They've pulled together, they have overcome so many things to be able to welcome our students back. I couldn't be more proud and thankful of our educators. We had an original timeline from our working group that would have taken us till November 17th to bring all of our students back. We were able to compress that timeline based on a feasibility study that we completed. So, now, starting this week, we have all students, elementary school kids, in four days a week. Mondays are a planning day for our teachers, and an asynchronous day so students are learning online on Mondays, K through five, they're in person with us four days a week. Our middle school students are coming to us two days a week, and our high school students at this point are coming to us one day a week. These are some of our schools in the city and county of Broomfield. You should see some familiar campuses there. I've been to a majority of the schools in Broomfield since we've been back, and I've never seen kids be so happy to be back in school. It's been really wonderful, and our teachers have just been just incredible, thankful to have kids back in person, and just meeting every challenge that this pandemic is throwing at them. So, I think we have a short video after this that we shot at Emerald Elementary.
So excited, a school without parents, just the building. We can't wait to welcome our draggers back.
Oh, my goodness. So excited. Love this school.
We're very excited to be back at school, ready, and it's been a long, it's been a long time, but we're super excited to be back.
I'm so excited to go to school, and looking forward to seeing my friends, like school.
Yeah, we've been waiting so long for this.
Good morning! Good morning, our daddy!
Excited to have them back in school. I know they're ready. I know I'm ready.
A thousand excited.
I'm excited to finally see my real teacher.
We have to watch screen all day, it's so great.
Really, really glad you're here, so you can get your eyeballs off the screen.
Best thing about today is just having the kids be here, interacting in person, getting to see their friends, having that actual human interaction, and getting their eyeballs off of the screen for a little while.
We hope that if it wasn't teachers, they would have done better, and they would more engaged. That is my hope. Hopefully. Bye!
Are you ready?
Yeah, me too.
I've been waiting for this for seven months, to see kids in person. Just awesome to have them out in the building.
I'm ecstatic and delighted and waiting for this to hold in. My classroom is full of children.
I love the kids, that's what this is all about.
I want to see the kiddos.
I have experienced everybody being excited about the return to school, kids excited to see one another.
Kids who have had a teacher for the last five weeks, and I've never met them face-to-face, so getting to actually meet their teacher.
And kindergarten families coming here on the campus for the first time, that all of those things have been wonderful.
I love how everybody has really prepared so well. I have had, everybody has put their masks on and has followed the procedures and guidelines that we set out, and I think it's just a great show of community spirit, and we're speaking of it.
The energy is different, right? Because the building is meant to have kids in it, so we're just, we're trying to happen here.
So typically, on the first day of school, we'll have lots of tears, lots of kids not wanting to go, lots of parents not wanting to leave. Not this year. Parents were happy to see their, I've never seen the first day of school, kids run in so fast, and parents drive away so fast. So, but it's certainly a huge success as we've opened up. As you all know, the numbers in Broomfield County and Boulder County are on the rise. We're keeping very close eyes on those, continuing to work with both Broomfield and Boulder County Public Health. At this point, we feel really good about our plan. We feel that our cohorts are small enough, and the mitigation strategies that we've taken on are strong enough to hopefully continue to keep kids in school. We have to have had, closed a couple of schools that were in the city of Boulder only because we had some pretty extensive quarantining that we were forced to do because a few positive cases showed up in the school. But what we're seeing, and what we're seeing across the Denver metro, is that if a case of COVID does come into one of our schools, that the isolation, quarantining, and mitigation strategies are separating those kids from the population, and we're not seeing transmission. I believe, I think that this is the data from last week of 40 districts, metro districts in the Denver area, there was about 12,500 students that were, that were, of those, only 35 actually contracted COVID-19, so less than a third of a percent at this point in time. So, I'm happy to pause here and answer any questions you might have about our reintroduction or anything that's going on in regards to that in Boulder Valley.
I have a question. I understand that the dial, you know, that Broomfield's contemplating moving from Level Two to Level Three at the safer home, that that doesn't necessarily impact you. Do you have something similar to the dial that you're watching, you know, district-wide or just school-wide, or?
Great question, Mayor Quinn. We're actually going to be using the state dial, and both Boulder County Public Health and Broomfield County Health have embraced that. And so, we're using the state dial and monitoring that as well. I will say that I know that our friends in Adams 12, the numbers in Adams County are increasing tremendously, at a much higher rate than Broomfield or Boulder at this point in time. And so, I know when Adams 12 has to make those decisions, they have to take Adams County, obviously, into consideration. But we're all using, we've all transferred over to the state dial. I think using the state dial, and all the districts were using something different that was through the Metro Denver Health Partnership. It was just confusing, so we moved over to the state dial.
A real quick question. My daughter did six days of in-class, and then they, you know, removed all the kids to all online now, and they started earlier. What was the decision to kind of start later than other school districts?
So, as I had shared earlier, one of the things that we, we ran into some logistical issues in the district in regards to staffing. We had a lot of staff that actually qualified for medical exemptions, and after a certain number of teachers aren't able to work and be in person, we had to stop and pause and rethink our plan. And so, that was, that was when we stopped. We began working with the phase, we called the Phase Two Plus Working Group within our five-phase plan, and then we allowed them to give us the timeline and give us some recommendations that have really served us well. And so, we got a little bit of a later start, but we feel like we're in really good shape at this point.
No, this is Devin. So, I really appreciate that BVSD has put the COVID dashboard online. That's, you know, a big tool, that now we have some information about what's going on in the district. And it looks like only one Boulder BVSD school has any issues, has any cases associated with that. But I also noticed that that's about, it's about a day behind. So, how frequently is that dashboard updated?
Thanks, Devin. Great question. Yeah, we're updating that information nightly with the knowing and understanding that at any point in time, like we, when we learn about cases, and I'd let Robin chime in if she wanted to, because she's on the front lines with this, we learn about cases 24/7, right? And so, once we learn about a case, it's time, we have to contact trace, we have to, you know, make sure that we're doing the right things, work with the health departments, and notify staff. But we're trying to update that on a daily basis. Robin, anything else to add around that?
I would just say that we're committed to making sure that the information that goes into the dashboard is accurate. So, as soon as we have a report of a possible case or a possible quarantine, we do go through an investigative process to make sure that the information that we've received is correct before it goes into the dashboard. So, that's the reason why there is sometimes a little bit of a lag.
I'm sorry, I have one more question, sorry. I appreciate this, and I get emails constantly from our school districts, and I'm sure you guys are doing the same thing. One of the things that we've run into in Adams 12 is that high school kids will go off and kind of party on the weekends, and then come back and bring it to the school, right? So, but we've noticed that the, they're not going from student to student, it's just the outside time period, and then they're bringing it into the school. Are you guys communicating a lot of the state mandates that Polis is putting out there? I think that's really important. I've asked, my son goes to private school, he goes to Holy Family, and I said, it's not enough anymore to say, don't go to large gatherings. We have to be very specific about numbers, very specific about households. I'm just curious about, how has that communication been for their time outside of your schools?
That's a great and timely question. We pushed some communication out to our parents and staff members yesterday, and the threshold that we're asking people to meet, and I know it's going to be difficult going into the Halloween weekend, is no more than 10 people at a gathering or two families. Anything beyond that is going to potentially allow those numbers to continue to climb. And so, we did share that out with our families, and we'll continue to do that and communicate that. And the more, the more people that can be doing that, because I don't know, even though the governor shared that and stated that, I still think of people, a lot of people don't understand that as the threshold that we need to be reaching.
And this is Jeanne, I have a question. I was very pleased when the Broomfield Library staff stepped up to offer support to parents and students with their remote learning. Have you been able to get that kind of assistance throughout the district from different library staffs or other places?
I'd say that we've had community partners throughout the district that have really stepped up and have opened their doors to help make sure that kids have support if they're trying to access remote learning. When we were delayed opening, we actually opened up 30 childcare sites all throughout the district to provide that custodial care that we know is so important to our community. We also had sites in Broomfield. Robin, I didn't know if you had any specific examples that you might want to share in regards to community partners in Broomfield. Maybe, maybe not, but certainly throughout our district, we've had lots of people step up, and it's just been really cool to watch us as communities come together to support our kids and families.
I would share just a bit of anecdotal information that, you know, one beautiful thing about the community of Broomfield is that it's incredibly community-minded. And so, we continue to hear information from our principals about community partners who are either already aligned to and involved with our schools, but also people that school staff are able to refer our families and students to in cases of need. So, you know, we've got all sorts of partnerships that are really important to our schools, and those have continued throughout COVID. Very, very thankful.
Is that it for questions on the reopening? Okay, so, it's hard because I can't see everyone's face in this gallery view, and I don't quite know how to see more. So, I guess our next item is just an update about our strategic plan.
Thanks, Tina, and I'll go ahead and present again.
Tina, I will let you know that the council's not shy, so if they have questions, they'll let you know.
Oh, you're just like us, then.
And Tina, if you click on the three dots in the bottom right-hand side, and then go to change layout, you can change that to have everybody on one screen. And that's for any council members or board members who may want to go ahead and do that. So, two and a half years ago, approximately, is when I started here in Boulder Valley Schools. One of the first things that we took on was a revamp of our strategic plan. Spent about six to eight months working with all aspects of our community, engaging teachers and staff in every community and every school, to develop our plan altogether for all students, which is designed to be a five-year strategy to accomplish the following three outcomes. First of all, we want to make sure that all kids get great, relevant educational and relevant challenging educational opportunities. We really want to ignite the learning of all of our kids. It's important that we equip all of our kids with the skills and supports that they need so we can reduce the disparities in achievement. Boulder Valley Schools has really great achievement and really large achievement gaps between some of our populations, and that has been a goal that our community has said that they need us to work on, and we do, and much of our strategy is aligned to be able to do that. And then, we also believe that within this strategy, we want to make sure that all students are empowered with the skills that they need to make sure their success, they're successful after they leave us here in Boulder Valley. And we know that not everyone's going to leave us and head right off to college, that there's other viable pathways that we need to be investigating and supporting, and lots of high-paying jobs and great careers that in the, that we have some work to do in, in that area in regards to career technical education. So, ignite, equip, soar. Those are the three things that we're trying to accomplish with our strategy and our strategic plan. This is just a reminder of the gaps. When you read about Boulder Valley, you're going to read about incredibly high student achievement, which you may not read, which may be in the fine print for some. It's not for us as a governance team, the Board and I are very in tune to this, is that we have very large achievement gaps, and we feel like we need to do more to make sure that all kids, regardless of zip code, of race, of how much money their parents make, should have the same opportunities and should be achieving at the same levels. Much of the work that we're doing is aligned to excellence and equity, but we've really changed our mantra to really drive excellence through equity, and that we know to be one of the best school systems in the entire country, that we need to make sure that we're creating those equitable outcomes for kids, and so that's our focus. Just some more, just kind of slides to emphasize that. So, don't try to read the slide, it's a little dizzying. This is everything we hope to accomplish in five years. Everything that's in bold is already started, six of our 14 initiatives that are designed around the themes and outcomes that we decided, that we described for you earlier. I like to share this slide because we have gotten to a level of specificity that's going to create a plan that generates action. A lot of strategic plans, people spend a lot of time, and they look good, and they market them, and they feel right, and then they sit on a shelf. We are committed to action here in Boulder Valley Schools, and over the course of the next five years, we anticipate that all of these initiatives will be completed, and by doing that, we're going to drive better outcomes for our kids and our community. Most of our equity work, which is really just a through line for much of what we're doing in our strategy, can be accessed from our website, and we've actually highlighted that through a link, Excellence Through Equity, so our entire community can know and understand all of the great work we're doing around equity. And again, these are the things that we're trying to accomplish with our strategy. And so, I know that's a quick run-through. I'm happy to pause and answer any questions around some of the specific initiatives that we may be taking on, or just the process, or any questions that council might have.
I'm assigned to the Workforce Center Board in Broomfield, and we were just discussing the Talent Equity White Paper that came out of the state through the Workforce Department. And that is emphasizing that the opportunities to go different pathways, as you alluded to, other than college, should be explored at a younger level. So, you need to start to realize the possibilities and, you know, good opportunities that are available in apprenticeships, or community college, and, you know, other than four-year college sooner. So, I just wondered if you wanted to talk about what you're doing to try to do, to meet those goals?
Absolutely, Jeanne, and that's actually a really incredibly important point, that we really feel like you have to have pathways to start in elementary school, right? Where we're beginning to really expose our students to the different types of careers and jobs that are out there, starting to really kind of just aligning with their interests so they know and understand that as they're planning their future and working through school, and we know how trying and hard that can be for some kids, that they see what it is that they're working towards. And so, as we begin to build out the initiative aligned to this within our strategic plan, we're really focusing on field trips, on apprenticeship... on, on, on field trips, on apprenticeships, on internship types of opportunities that then lead to, to high-need, high-wage career pathways, right? That, that we know that, that we can send kids right from our school district, right into our community to work. And so that work has been paused a little bit by the pandemic. I wish I could tell you that we're moving full steam ahead. All of our efforts right now are to keep our schools open and to get them opened up. Quite frankly, most of our district staff on most days are serving in schools, helping, helping teach, helping supervise. So as those things settle down, we look to continue to ramp those efforts back up. But it's something that is very important to this school board, very important to me personally, and I think just a great opportunity for us to grow in Boulder Valley Schools.
This is Devin again. I'm so glad that Jean mentioned the, the Workforce Center. And I've seen one of the programs that, that at least Boulder, Broomfield High School has participated in, I think some other high schools in Boulder Valley School Districts have participated in, but the Math and Construction Program. And they just changed a part of their focus more onto ADUs instead of kind of a little bit larger of a size house. And I just wonder if there's a possibility to work with workforce centers as well as with maybe some of the apprenticeship programs in the state and with the high schools and that math and construction program to, to kind of accelerate that program and those ideas that are coming out of that program.
Devin, I'm so glad that you mentioned that. And for those of you who haven't seen this, you should swing by Broomfield High. We, it's, it's called Geometry and Construction. You know, geometry is that, that freshman sophomore level math course that all kids take. And it's really at a place where a lot of kids lose interest in math. And what we've been able to do is combine construction with mathematics. Sometimes the kids are in the classroom, other times they're out building. I've been out there several times, swinging a hammer a few times. It is, it is incredible to see those kids start to connect the dots on, on, on trades and jobs and math. You know, how many times have you heard, or maybe you've even said, you know, when am I ever going to use this? When you're in a geometry or algebra type math class? We don't hear that in those classes. It's a really cool opportunity. We are looking, Devin, at least here in Boulder County, to expand that through a partnership with Habitat for Humanity that we've been working with. They've been a great partner. But again, things were really ramping up around last March and we haven't been able to get momentum to get that back going again. But certainly lots of opportunities and anybody who would have folks who would want to partner with the district, have them reach out directly to me, we'll get them in touch with the right folks.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it on that topic? Okay, and I just wanted to take a minute to allow Kitty to introduce herself because she was able to join us. So Kitty, do you mind just? I can't hear you.
Yeah. Tina, I'll point out that Councilwoman Tessie has signed on as well.
Okay, great. Well, Kitty Sargent is, she's actually the representative from, for Superior. I just wanted to point out that she was able to join us. All right, so then our next item on our agenda is the, just a quick update on the organization of our staff, which is different than it was three years ago.
Thanks, Tina. I'll present again. So as we started to begin to think, hold on one moment. As, as I finished out my first semester in the district, we started to really think about how was our, our organization structured and how was that best structured to support schools? We definitely feel like we want to push our resources as closest to our schools and our communities. And it didn't take long for us to realize or for me to realize that in a, in a district that's 500 square miles, that you have very different needs in our varying communities, whether it's Broomfield, Boulder, Nederland, Lafayette, Lewisville, Superior. We've got unique communities that you have unique needs. And most of our resources were more of a central function. So we decentralized and created three networks to ensure that our resources were closer to schools that needed them. And so we have the East Network, Southwest Network, and Northwest Network. We have already introduced Robyn. She leads the East Network Schools, which are all the schools in Broomfield. Robyn's been in the district for, for quite some time and was one of the, the champions in helping us lead to this decentralized model. So Robyn, if you wanted to give a couple of comments on how you feel like this has worked and how, how you feel like it has helped us support our families and kids learning in Broomfield at higher levels, that would be awesome.
Yeah, great. I'd be happy to do that, Dr. Anderson. So, for a district office to be able to understand the needs of communities and schools, it's important to look at both families holistically, at communities holistically, and at a student's educational experience from PK all the way through 12th grade. And so by reorganizing the district, what it has allowed us to do is really see what a child and a family's experience is from the time they enter the school and all of the siblings in the family and the children in an entire community and follow them in terms of the curriculum that they experience, the instructional experiences they have, but also the community and the social experiences. And so for us to not only look at one level, because prior to this, this position, I was the Assistant Superintendent of Elementary. So I looked at our elementary schools only through the elementary lens. But we know as parents and as educators and members of the community, that it really is an all-encompassing 12, 13, 14, 15-year experience. And so we really are able to address needs of communities and families from the vantage point of who they are as our youngest learners and what we need for them in terms of resources and experiences in order to build on every year, every grade level to successfully help them complete an entire public school experience that makes sense for them and then prepares them for graduation and life beyond. And in addition, it allows us to really focus. You will see that we have all of the schools in these communities, but they are all interlinked. And so those of us who work in our network and within our network, it's not just Nativity Miller and myself, as you saw on the previous slide, we have other folks in the network whose entire job is to focus only on the schools, the needs of the schools in our network. So they are really becoming experts in the communities of Broomfield, Lafayette, and Erie, and, but also in the needs of each individual school. And so it's been really, really exciting. We feel like we've been able to address insufficient or missing district conditions that are responsive to individual communities. And why are we able to do that? Because we really, really know the communities and the schools much, much better. And we know entire families, families who have students in elementary and at middle and at high. And we're able to talk to them and look at it as, as a whole experience. So it has enabled us to be far more responsive to, to our schools and our communities and to make sure that what we do at the Ed Center is aligned to what each school actually needs us to do. So it's been a very positive switch.
Thanks, Robyn. I will stop sharing and then I'm happy to answer any questions. We have one, one more topic that we'll, we'll cover through, but I'll pause there. I will say one other thing in regards to the networks. One of the pieces of advice, and I was all throughout our community when I first started, was to make sure you don't forget Broomfield. That there is, there is a, an important focus and emphasis on making sure that Broomfield felt a big part of our district. And so by, by pushing these resources closer, I think that we've been able to give lots and lots of attention and focus on the schools that are in, in Broomfield, city of Broomfield, Broomfield County, that are part of our school district.
Questions? Okay, we'll just do our next topic then, which is Broomfield enrollment trends. So I'm not sure if you track your zero to 18 residents, but we do. And it's something that we track. We have a pretty phenomenal demographer, Glenn Segrew, who, it's just amazing how he can predict how many kids are going to show up in August. Amazing. And he also is extremely good at predicting what the yield of students in that age group will be for every type of housing development. So if you have developments, you probably have already seen from him, how many students each type of housing will produce. So here are the slides. Rob, do you want to walk through?
I sure will. As, as a school system, as with, and I believe the same is for, is the same case in Adams 12, we're seeing declining enrollment as our population is getting older and we're seeing less families that are moving into our school district. As you can see, over the course of the next several years, the loss of several hundred, hundred kids at the, at the, at the K-12 level. And when you break that out by elementary, middle, and high, you can see a big dip in elementary, less of a dip at middle school, and high school actually starts to stay flat. Part of that is, is not only because of our residents, but we also have a high number of students who open enroll into Broomfield High, more than our elementary and middle schools. And so as we think about, as our population as a whole of students, it is on the decline. I think that over the course of the next several years, we'll continue to shift and adjust to make sure that we're adjusting our staff and adjusting our programs to meet the needs of our students. But we are seeing declining enrollment, not only in the Broomfield area, but also across the entire district.
Rob, what's that dotted line mean there?
Oh, hold on a second. I, I pulled that off. That is residence and that's enrollment. So the difference between residence and enrollment is that's that open enrollment piece. Did that come up for you? Can you, can you see that now?
No, now I can't.
Okay. Yeah, so it's, so it's, that's, the difference is open enrollment. As you, so you can see, you know, we have a couple, we have a few hundred kids each and every year in, open enrolling at our high school, at Broomfield High, a little more at middle, not as many as at elementary, where in actuality, in 2021, those are, those are projected to meet. And I don't know, Robyn, if you had anything you wanted to share about this overall trend or anything else you're seeing?
Sure. So as Dr. Anderson said, we do track enrollment very, very carefully. And that includes open enrollment requests from out of district. And as the overall number of students has declined, we are also seeing out-of-district open enrollment requests to attend BVSD schools decline. We used to see much higher numbers in elementary in particular than we are seeing now. Our schools that are, you know, very close to Adams 12, Aspen Creek is one, Cole being another, we used to have very large wait lists. Those are far smaller now. We still have significant wait lists of students from out of district at Broomfield High School. That's probably our largest percentage at this time. And so that has been a shift over time. Each level used to be far more consistent and now our greatest request for students coming from out of district is at the high school.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll throw in one other thing too, is I think this graph, and Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the, the resident line is the resident of people in Broomfield that are within the BVSD boundaries. And the elementary schools that are in Broomfield, which I think are Cole, Emerald, and, or is it Birch? And?
Birch, Aspen Creek, Cole, and Emerald. You got it.
And they were all at about 30% open enrollment and the middle school was at about 40% open enrollment and the high school was about 40% open enrollment. So it's, it's, it's an area that is significantly populated with students that do not live within the BVSD boundaries. So what would be helpful maybe next time is, we may wish to put a trend line that reflects the whole area that we draw from, which would be more consistent with part of the Adams 12 section of Broomfield, because it would show that, because I believe that part is the residents are declining in that area as well, which affects, which has a double impact on us as there's more capacity in Adams and there are less requests for our schools as well, since we're both experiencing declining enrollment simultaneously. Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah, it does. And then I would also say that I'd be curious to see what the, the schools that are in Broomfield, in terms of the percent capacity there. I know that with my kids going to Cole, I know that there's fewer and fewer classes coming through. So there used to be a couple sets of three classes in one grade going through. Their last big classes going to be graduating at the end of this year and they'll be down to two, two per grade. And maybe even with this next kindergarten and, and first grade classes, they'll have even fewer than that. So, but that would be interesting to see.
Yeah, Cole is definitely not the only school where we're seeing the rounds decreasing. We also are seeing that in Superior. And the, yeah, and I'll stop there.
So I have a question, if I may. I'd like, I would, I'm curious, like generational trend too, right? I mean, neighbors have a natural, you know, you know, okay, there's aging and then there's new, new members of the community coming into the, so I'd be curious to know, like, the cyclical versus just the straight-line trend, like how, how often do you typically see dips like this? And how, how long do they last? And, you know, when can we expect to see an uptick?
We can follow up with Glenn, right, Rob? Glenn actually will say things like, however, Boulder is ready for a tick up because X, Y, Z, and he has some rationale on, Y will see a slight uptick and lo and behold, you see a little bump in kindergarten. So we don't have that answer right now, I don't think.
No, but we're happy to follow up with staff. I can follow up with Jennifer and share not only the, the capacities in our elementary schools, but I'll ask Glenn. We'll go back and, and watch this and ask him to do the best he can to answer that question for you. Councilmember Tessie, I can do that for you.
Thank you so much.
We may also want to include the open enrollment matrix, which shows the percentage of students that are open enrolling from out of district at each of our schools. I always find that to be interesting and you can look at just kind of how it's divided between children from Adams versus children from BVSD more or less.
So I'm thinking of that. I have another question related. I'm sorry if I'm taking up too much time, but like the question that I have is like, as community grows and developments grow, isn't there a need for the schools to accommodate the residential versus those who are trying to opt in? So I was wondering too, if you could talk a little bit about that?
No, absolutely. I think that as we think about open enrollment and, Robyn, you may want to speak about this a little bit. I'll, I'll give it my best shot. I think, I think I understand how, exactly how it works. We are going to make sure that we prioritize our community and open enrollment slots really are, are open for those that are in excess of what the, the community needs within the school. And so we use those open enrollment slots to provide choice. But we certainly don't give people who don't live in a community preference to go to their community school over someone who doesn't live, who doesn't live within the community. That's accurate, correct, Robyn? You're nodding, okay, good.
Yeah, and this is also where, if you haven't seen a forecast, so when, when there's a new development, there's a process whereby they reach out to our demographer to see if there would be a significant impact to the school's capacity. If there were ever a development that would have that kind of impact, we'd have to start looking at a new school, which would be highly unlikely in the, in the case of Broomfield. But, and Glenn comes up with a report that predicts exactly how many kids will yield out of that development depending on the housing type. Any other enrollment questions? I'll share, it might be obvious, I love enrollment reports. So, we have an extra 10 minutes and we'd love just to hear any other questions you might have for the board or Rob or Robyn?
Yeah, let me, you know, let me jump into the, the School Resource Officer and, and the announcement that you were not, you're, you're going to page those out, I think at the end of 2021. And I'm going to make this very categorically. I'm not speaking on behalf of council, we haven't had a chance to talk about it. You know, there's been a few of us council members that have had discussions. We may have a different relationship because you're in several different communities with our police department than other communities do. And, and once again, our Chief of Police, you know, our council's very close to, we went through like 15 hours of training after the George Floyd incident. So the SRO decision, is that going to be a district-wide decision? And we have also paid a district-wide decision? And we have also paid for our school resource officer in, uh, in, uh, in, in Boulder Valley School District. So I guess we were hoping that the dialogue, or at least I was hoping the dialogue wasn't completed and that we could have some discussions about the school resource officer in Broomfield, uh, before you guys said we couldn't have one.
Okay. Yeah, that's a great question. And, um, so what we're working on is a resolution right now that frames what the conversations and the, the work will be between now and a tentative date of January or a target date. And what we've committed to in the resolution, and you can see it, there's a draft on our board docs website, is to be able to come up with a safety plan and to, uh, for each school and make sure that the community can look at it and have input and make sure that it works. We have such a long timeline because it is really complicated. And as you just mentioned, every municipality is different. Every agency is different and each, and we're going to have to develop specific agreements with each community. And that is built into the resolution. Um, so I think that there, we can have conversations about that and see what that would look like. Rob, do you want to add anything?
Sure. And just to clarify, it's January 2022.
Right.
Yeah. Cause, cause Tina said January. And we did have a conversation with the police chiefs, Mayor Quinn, Chief Krieger, was on that call earlier this, this, um, this week where we had an opportunity to connect with them. Um, our director of safety security, Brendan Sullivan, was former, um, worked in Broomfield for a long time, has great relationships there. Um, I think that, you know, our goal is to, um, to create and develop a plan, um, that, that certainly meets the needs of our communities, um, but also creates levels of safety, um, and for all of our kids that are higher than they are now. And, um, I think that the, the, what our, um, Equity Council and our District Advisory Council, which were the two citizens groups, uh, that, um, well, the two advisory groups that reviewed this, um, found a, just a disproportionality, um, between arrests and discipline, um, for our students of color. And, uh, we know that as a school district, we have work to do. We've been start, we've started that work. We're committed to doing that work. Um, but I think that's the big problem that we're trying to solve. And so as the board works to develop this resolution, um, and to, and to create the space for us to, to, to develop, um, solutions that, that meet the needs of our communities, uh, we'll continue to work with, with, with the chief. Um, we'll work with Jennifer, city manager, uh, to make sure what we're doing, um, accomplishes what we're, what we, what we set out to do accomplishes what we're trying to do, and which is, we want to make sure that all kids feel safe in our schools. And we don't want that our rest, our discipline to be disproportionate.
And I, I, I got a little interrupted by one of my kiddos that just got home. So, um, is there a kind of an interim plan as well? Not just kind of this, uh, long-term approach of what this is going to look like, but kind of an interim plan of like steps to work towards or, or actions that can be made in the interim between now and January 2022?
Absolutely. I think that, that, once the, the board finalizes, uh, the resolution, our staff will begin to get to work, um, and start to begin to, to understand what that plan is, what our timelines are, how we're going to engage, do deeper engagement, um, with, with, um, both our middle schools and high schools in Broomfield, as, as well as everywhere else throughout the district. Um, and to make sure that we have, uh, very timely, um, and transparent updates to the community on how that's going. Uh, but at this point, um, we're, we're, we're waiting for the resolution to be finalized. So we have clear direction to move forward.
Um, currently the, the first date though will be May 1st because there'll be some budgetary impacts about around this work. And we have asked that we can consider the budgetary impacts in our regular budget cycle. Uh, we generally adopt a budget in the first or second, or by the end of June. Um, and that particular meeting will also have the timeline for the next six months at that time. So, um, partly because of the pandemic and because staff is spending so much time just supporting schools in a staffing perspective, um, it is going to take us longer than we would have probably liked. Um, but, um, you know, our commitment is for kids to be in schools and that is what we're pri- prioritizing first right now. Does that help?
Yeah. So I was just, I guess I was looking more to see if there were going to be changes, but I think you just answered that, that, that we shouldn't really expect any changes to the SROs until May.
Probably not until January of next year.
Okay.
In Broomfield.
You know, with the groups that we've engaged, it was pretty clear that, um, it was pretty clear that this wasn't a pull SROs out and do nothing, right? It was, you know, what are the, as, what are the problems that our SROs are trying to solve? Are they in the best position? You know, what position, are they in the best position to solve those problems? And if not, what else could that might look like? And what does the relationship with law enforcement look like with those additional resources? And so I think that it is, it's not a pull out and don't do anything. Um, I, it's, it's, it's a, it's a more complex solution than that, um, to get to the problems we're trying to solve.
Yeah. I, I just think it's safe to say that the city council has an interest in what you're doing. Uh, and to the extent that we have provided financial support in the past for the SRO. So, uh, or, or not ask for financial support from Boulder Valley, I guess the best way, better way to say it, that, uh, it, so it seemed like an appropriate thing to bring up tonight.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing it up. This is, and I'm so glad we are getting together because of things like this, that sometimes we don't connect, but we are really all working in some of the same areas. And I think we're all dedicated to students and their safety and wellbeing.
There's a lot of questions, there's a lot of questions in the community right now about high school students getting back to school. Um, and I know that you all have a plan for that, but, uh, there's, there's a growing frustration about them not getting back to school. Um, and, uh, you know, I mean, I don't know. I mean, you all know that. Uh, I don't know if there's anything I can say or we as a council can say or do that'll convince you, uh, you know, otherwise to get them back to school. But I just wanted to relay that, that there's growing frustration and, um, and anxiety about getting the high school students back to school.
Definitely. And, um, we, we hear it loud and clear. Uh, we're happy that we're back to one day a week at the church. Um, I am asking community members to please follow public health guidelines, to wear a mask, to social distance, not gather with house, more than two households. I feel that some people aren't really taking these guidelines seriously. And what it does is it strains our public health resources and then they can't support us to further open our schools. So that's one of our issues. Um, the other is that I openly ask people to think about working for the district. So we are hiring. Staffing is an issue. My friend just got a job. She's starting on Tuesday and that is going to help our schools stay open and expand. So there might be people in your community who are looking for a job, maybe just for six months. And it would be a help to us because every district is trying to hire right now and there's not a lot out there. So we are definitely going back to our community to help with that. Notably, very few districts are closing schools for risk of transmission. It's a lot of staffing issues. So, so we just really, you know, I can't encourage it more. Please ask the community to modify their Halloween plan. It would be awful if this were a super spreader Halloween. So.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're, we're. So I need to sign off and I think we're close to seven because we're going to have a town hall in 15 minutes. I just want to say, I was just adding up the years and, and Robin, it's really good to see you again. I really enjoyed talking to you, uh, when you were at Aspen Creek with my kids. Um, you know, I say, I just realized that I've had a kid in the Boulder Valley School District since 1981. So that tells you how old I am. And, uh, so that, that, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a long commitment. And, uh, it, I have just enjoyed the relationship with the Boulder Valley School District. And my sophomore in high school gets, she, she's on an IEP and gets an amazing amount of services. So thank you for all you do. And, and I understand how difficult it is right now. So.
Well, thanks all of you for your time.
Mayor Quinn, we look forward to seeing you at the next, uh, Broomfield State Championship Ceremony. I think that's the last time we had a chance to say hello.
Yeah, we're, we're, we slowed down a little.
Be nice if we could do that again.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. Good night.